This meeting to order.
Oh.
If you could, this all rise for the blood of the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on the call please.
Nelson.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Smith.
There.
Sullivan.
Here.
Walden.
Here.
Portman.
Here.
All right, before I get going on the approval of the minutes, I do want to introduce a associate from Sir Leon Northrup, this is Rockstone, he is here, he's working with our attorney, so he's maybe someday we'll get into doing municipal law and everything, so we'll see. And if Stephen gives me something, I don't want to turn it. Do you have any complaints? Okay, so, anyway, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 5th, 2023 council meeting. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none.
Roll call please.
Portman.
Here.
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All right, up next, a motion to approve the payment of the bills as they appear on the warrant sheets. If you could have a motion to approve those, please.
I'll make that motion. Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Portman.
Yes.
All right, up next, public comments on agenda items. Can I have any public comments on the agenda items?
What was the Maxmeyer subdivision, was that the name?
That will be the name of it, yes. Moving on, we'll have communications from the mayor. First off, I want to let everybody know, we got Assumption Fest coming up, starting on the Thursday, August 17th, and running through the 19th, so we want to make sure to get out there and enjoy Assumption Fest. Anything angels want, no, we're going to be closing the street off probably about a week prior, about that Monday or so, to get the stage and everything set up, so just be aware of that and have fun and enjoy. Also, I want to let everybody know that coming up on Friday, as you probably may have seen, if you've been on Facebook or on watching TV, especially WCIA Channel 3, they'll be here as part of our Our Town series. So they're going to be setting up uptown and Assumption Committee Pride will be hosting a farmer's market. This all begins at four o'clock and there are going to be food trucks, there's going to be bouncy houses. Later that night, at John Julia's, Julia's house, Julie's house, there are going to be, the St. Jude runners will be coming in about 1:00 a.m., so they're going to be, prior to that, uptown, while WCIA is here, making signs for all the runners, so it's a great thing to come out and see.
I just add, I just, I just formed, just pulled in assumption from watching the runners leave Memphis today.
Oh, okay.
And you guys, I cannot tell you how everybody, they talk to down there, they tell about assumption. So I hope we have a great turnout because they honestly love our town.
And they do love us.
They do, I added two more to the day. So, but yes, we will be making signs uptown here at four o'clock during the.
Yeah, so on Friday, we're going to kind of, we're going to set up barricades about 11:00 o'clock, just to let the people know that, hey, we're going to be closing the street off. You can still go up there and do your banking, go into hair 101 if you need to, but by 2:00, WCIA will be here setting everything up, so there can't be any cars up there, so just be wary of that. And then also, I want to let everybody know, Governor Prisker did declare Christian County a disaster area, so there's some things that we will get reimbursed back on through the Emergency Management Agency, so I wanted everybody to be aware of that. Then also, the garbage contract, as you all know, ends at the end of the year. I will have a meeting this month with Waste Management, we're going to see what they can bring. I will also tell you, I called one other garbage company, they had no interest in coming to Assumption. I've reached out to another garbage company, it's down at Harriet, and he will probably come and bring a proposal to us maybe by September. However, talking to him, he stated that our rates will be $4 a month or higher because of a tow fee. He does not do recycling, and he wanted the city to do all the billing. So, those are some things that he has talked about, but we'll, we'll see. Like I said, I called Waste Management to give them a heads up and go from there, so I'll probably try and call another one, but a lot of them are just saturated, and I have not heard good things about what we was, so I did not call them. But at least I want to let you know it's on our radar and hopefully we'll have some movements of what we're going to do by September. Also, I want to let you know, originally it was going to be on the agenda that we were going to have a presentation dealing with electric car chargers. We did go in with another company, with a firm up in Winfield, Illinois, it's called Carey Farms, and they are to be hearing if they actually did receive the grant to put in charging stations. The other closest municipality to us is Effingham, most of them are all up in the Chicago area. However, the guy's brother lives in Ireland and he had a brain tumor, so he was unable to come. And two, he did not have all of the specs ready, like how much, you know, like how much we could possibly make off of our charging stations, costs, things like that, but there's no cost to us, but we will implement, the implementing of the cost will be paid out through the revenue sharing program, so he's going to have all of that ready for us in September. He is also planning on making a visit as he goes through the state to Assumption, but I don't know when that's going to be. Also, I want to let you know, so I sent a letter, this is in regards to Bond, I sent a letter to the owner to have that tree cleared up that has fallen, it is affecting the sidewalk there that's along our college street, and we have not heard anything back from him. One thing though, that I will say that we're all going to have to think about is, I know that the lawn company that has been mowing Bond, they quit talking, they have stopped paying payments. So, what's going to be the problem is, is that the city would probably have to end up mowing it, because they're not going to sit there and let it grow up in weeds. City will end up mowing it, we will then in turn, you know, put a lien on it, the taxes was not paid on Bond, so we've got that issue, but we're going to kind of, we did send a letter certified with signature, the guy did sign it. So we did reach out to communication, the phone number that we have, the same one that the lawn company has, has been disconnected. So, it'll be a little tough to get a hold of him, but we're not going to have to do something, we can't let it grow up in weeds, and if, like, if it has to, we'll cut, you know, we'll have to pay, the city will tear the tree down, you know, to clear the tree up, and then we'll just rack up all the costs and go from there. But I wanted you all to be aware that that day of reckoning is coming. And also, this past week, we got the school resource officer sworn in, Doug Allen, he's definitely anxious and ready to go. We are still waiting on the state to do some certification paperwork, we hope to have that all taken up and done by the time school starts, but we have hired, we're getting the car outfitted with the police sirens and that necessary equipment, and he'll be ready to go. We also, we went and got fitted for his uniforms. You guys, you got anything else you need to add? So, one thing is that during the summer, he will help work patrol for us, so we will have somebody else working for that. And that is it, that's all that I got, so I'll turn it over to the attorney, he's got quite a bit of stuff, so we'll go from there.
Got a few, so busy month. You may recall that we had a consent order that the Attorney General had contacted, wondering, A, where the payment was, and B, whether it needed to be revised, but the payment has been made and the Attorney General and EPA both have agreed that we're okay with the consent order, it does not need to be revised, and it is, they consider that fully compliant with at this point, so that one's off the list. In the meantime, you may recall, the last meeting, I said there was another, a different violation notice from the EPA that we were meeting with them the day after our last meeting, we did have that meeting, it went very well. We followed that up with a further response. The unofficial response from the EPA so far has been positive, I have every reason to believe that they will accept our response and give us what's called a compliance commitment agreement that just requires certain steps to be taken so that there's no further enforcement, but hopefully that will be off our books too in another month or two, which is follow-up through our processes. Then, the other thing that I've passed out to you guys, a sheet on, as I was getting things ready to do the deed and to finalize the sale of that 712 East Illinois property, realized that there were some basic steps, and I apologize, I will, I will fully follow my sword on this one, and, you know, I should have looked earlier, but it turns out that it was handed to me and I thought all that was necessary was to get the final steps taken, but there has not been the preliminary steps of following the procedures to sell real estate. There are three, there's actually two ways that a municipality can sell real estate, one is to put it out to bids, and the second is to get an appraisal and then sell it for 80% of the appraised value. Neither of those were done here. So, in order to, to do either of those things, we would be looking at September, probably October or November before the title could actually be transferred. So if that's the main concern, trying to, you could try to transfer before that, I've, at the top of the options I've given you, there's a third option, which would be to lease the property at this point. Lease it for however long a period of time you want, a year, two years, three years, with the proviso that as part of the lease requirements, they tear the house down and improve the property. At the end of the lease, for everyone to sign the transfer title, it could be that the value of that work could be added to their bid, so that at the end of the process, they would be the winning bidder, and by the way, the city would not have to necessarily give the, give the property to the highest bidder, it's whatever's in the best interest of the city. So, the choices, and I just need to know which way you'd like me to go with it, is whether we're bidding it out, or whether we're getting an appraisal for it, or instead, do I draft up a lease and proceed down that route.
One thing that I had mentioned to the attorney was that probably it would be best to do the bid. If we go out and get the appraisal, we're paying quite a bit for it, you know, at least we're paying a couple of, a couple thousand dollars for it, and two, it also adds additional time for it by the time we get the bid, you know, by the time, I'm sorry, if we get the appraisal. So, the lease, I mean, it is good, I mean, when I talked to the attorney, he was stating he's going to look into it, see if we can do it. I'm happy with that, but I think the easiest, in my opinion, would be just to do it for bid.
And the bidding process requires at least 30 days of bidding, so even if we put the first bid, or the first notice
out tomorrow, the next meeting, this fairly scheduled city council meeting, is less than 30 days away. So it would be November before we could open bids and actually get that process done, as opposed to just going ahead and leasing it and as soon as the September meeting's done. What would have to take place, because that'd have to do with a resolution authorizing the lease, and that could be then, and then draft up the lease, and then that could be.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that either.
Yeah, but that could be executed right after the next meeting, September meeting.
Did we ever get the title searched back?
Yeah, we have, the title does identify some tax liens, but those predate when the city took title to it, and the judicial decree, the judicial lead does specifically state that all liens have been wiped out. And as far as I can tell, everyone who is claiming a tax lien was given proper notes, so I don't think we have anybody hiding in the leads, so to speak, ready to make things happen. So that's, that's my report, yeah, just need, at some point I need to know how you'd like me to proceed with.
I mean, what do you guys think?
I'm okay with the bid, how's this?
A bid? Just go ahead and get started on that?
Okay.
No, oh, you want to say anything on the, that house on Poplar, Leiflin, the Dunkle?
Oh, Duncan?
Duncan, yes.
Yeah, that one is, that does have some liens that are outstanding, and I know the Dunkels would be interested in just having it done with it, but the city doesn't want to take it and then have to pay tax liens. So what the process would probably be is to either get the lien claimants to, to release their liens, or just go ahead and, you know, go through the process of having the property declared, abandoned and.
Yeah, and one thing we can do with this bidding, back to the container house, we can put in there that whoever gets it, they're required to tear the house down, you know, so that would be a requirement. Now, we could also do the same thing with that house off of Poplar, Leiflin, make it a requirement that whoever gets it has, you know, make it to where the reserve price is higher, to where we get our money back, because we're on the hook for $800, $700 dollar water bill, and go ahead and do that once we get the title and everything, so. I would say get working on that and just put it up for bid too and.
All right, just go ahead and get that kicked out and get the judicial decree of abandonment?
I'm sorry, what?
No, we'd have to go through the court first and get the court order.
Okay, what if it's one of ours? I mean.
If, if they voluntarily sell it to you, and we can get them to voluntarily waive their liens, you know, as opposed to being wiped out in court, that, that would.
How much are we talking?
Hundreds, you know, just like.
It's mostly just property tenant.
Yeah, okay, it's the tax scavengers.
All right, up next, treasure, you got anything?
No, I do not.
All reference, I got anything? Dana, you got anything? All right, we'll start rolling into new business, I need a motion to renew CD 121, 1212724 at the best possible rate.
I'll make the motion.
What's the, what's the dollar amount?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand?
Twenty thousand, one hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty cents.
There you have it.
For six months.
For six months, all right, at the best possible rate. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Green. Yes. Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Portman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve the anti-rack berries for the park swing for $626.96. This will be on the swing set that will make it capable to have a ADA compliance swing, what is it called, Dana?
There's a generational swing.
Generational swing, yes.
And there's an ADA swing.
Yes.
There's two swings.
Couldn't think of the second. So does he get a motion to approve that, please? It'd be from a little tight.
Well, it's, we're having to fabricate a new frame to bring it down, and these are the berries that go in there for it, they didn't apparently come with the swings, we had to order them separately.
You have a second? I'll start now. Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walden. Walden.
Yes.
Portman.
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve sidewalk for 205 North Poplar for a 50/50 program. This is location, she has requested a sidewalk for quite a long time, and I will say, every time I've tried to call her, I have not gotten a hold of her. So, what it is, is that she would like to have a sidewalk placed in front of her house, we have an ordinance that, that is the case, the homeowner has to pay her part of it, city pays the other part. There is no other connecting sidewalk, it's just old brick that's in front of the place, but she's still interested in it, so we talked about it in the streets and we will bring it up here for her vote. Need a vote to approve for a sidewalk in 205 North Poplar for a part of 50/50 program.
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Portman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve the hiring of the engineer for the Maxmeyer subdivision, that will be Mark Diggum, you all know Mark, he has worked with us before, and he's worked with John and Julie, so I knew that he would probably be a great fit, so Mark, I'll turn it over to you if you want to do a little topic.
I appreciate you having me here and asking me to work on this project, I'd be more than happy to, you know, work, work on it, so I introduce Joe Byers, I'm not a surveyor, and, you know, some part of this subdivision will require a surveyor, so Joe's going to be working with me on the project. As you guys know, sixteen lot subdivision, we'll prepare the subdivision, you know, for recording at the county, we'll prepare the plans and permits for submitting to the states, getting everything ready to, you know, put it out to bid, and then, and then move forward with actually construction once directed to do so, so that's, that's pretty well it, unless somebody has any questions.
We are going to have to hire through a resolution, so it will be Resolution 2023-8. The motion to approve Resolution 2023-8.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Portman.
Yes.
Nelson. Green.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have discussion and action as necessary on an ordinance for the Maxmeyer subdivision, so kind of turn this a little bit over to what we're kind of thinking on, it's like, what sort of information ordinance that you will need, so Joyce, do you kind of have some things hammered out that you'd kind of like to see out there?
I think for this one, it's the concern that the existing city ordinance for additions and subdivision.
It is not proper for out there.
It needs some amendments in order to, you know, to cover the Maxmeyer addition, there are just some wording that needs to be addressed and make it a little more generic. Basically, it would allow the city to purchase and develop land for it, where in the past, it would make statements like, you know, the drainage without let, the addition shall be installed at no cost to the city. Well, in this case, if the city is the one that's doing it, that shouldn't be the warning, so we would need something like to say it be installed by the developer, whoever the developer is, and things like that, and. Even I didn't know if you had looked at that to discuss any of the.
No, just, just cursory, because basically I was waiting to get the, the response from us.
Did they have copies of that?
Yes, I have, passing around.
Yeah, I think that's enough. And I just marked the things that stood out to me, I mean, you might have.
I, I've seen the same thing, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with them, I mean, the things I've drafted are good, so the plan is, is that we will then create this new ordinance, and then we will vote on it at the September meeting.
We'll have it ready by then, Steve?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And us.
How do you put in there the cost of the developer if there is no developer? There's not a developer, that project, the city's basically, we're running with the housing.
The city's acting as developer, I guess we could just, you know, make sure that's clear in the definitions, but that would be my understanding.
So we'll have a draft, we'll have everything ready by finance.
And definitely, if any of you see anything that, or something that's not in here that you think, oh, we should have that, you know, let me know.
Let them know on November. Preferably before the last Monday of the month, because we'll have it through finance, so we like to get everything at least kind of posted and.
So it needs to be by what date, if it's the last Monday, you need it before then?
28th of August is finance.
Forty-eight.
Does any of us bookers own it or?
No, I would not think so.
So by the 28th?
You don't think anything would need zoning, do you?
Uh, I mean, the, no, the annexation brought it in as residential, so it should be okay, unless there's anything that I'm not aware of.
And then up next would be the discussion and action as necessary on the covenants for the Maxmeyer subdivision, it's kind of the same thing, just kind of talked about what we have, really the only thing that was brought up as a possible change was adding that a house had to be built within 18 months. Everything else that has been written out in front of you guys has been, you're most feasible.
These, these items are just bulleted items that basically came right out of Dietrich's covenant agreement for their housing, we figured they've done this for 10 or 15 years, they've homed their covenant agreements over those times, over those years, and I don't know if they even drew them through their subdivision, but it's a beautiful place, and they've put these covenants in place to make sure that you build a house there, you're going to be happy with not only your own setting, but your neighbor's setting and, and that, so these are just things, like I say, right out of there, but the, the whole, if anybody ever wants to see the entire verbiage, it's like six or seven pages for the whole covenant, these are just bulleted things that I lifted out there, trying to get all of them. The highlighted in yellow is just something that John and Julie wanted to be sure and put in there, Dietrich does not have that, and our grow, our grow Assumption Committee grew by two in the last couple months here, Selena and Donnie Walden are now on that group, because we wanted representation from the city council, and we have meeting the other night to look these over, and that one change, thinking that, you know, implementing the thing where they have to have a home built in 12 months is a little restrictive, so we made it 18 months, we don't want to let it go very long, because you're anxious to get the tenth month coming back into the city, and the quicker the house is finished, the better, so. Do you know if there's any question?
Yeah. Question, minimum square footage, question number four. footage, thirteen, the smallest is thirteen hour square feet, including garage and porch and decks and basements, and then if you go down to the decks, but it's no basement on home, you'll make your stuff.
No basement, no basement, homes. Okay, so you can still have a basement, yes. Oh, yeah. Because. Yeah. That's good, that's clarified by.
I, I agree, Martha.
Sure. I, I. Well, I. If anybody else wants to.
And then, I have two questions, the architectural committee, who's going to create that, the city?
They, they sure can, we were, we were hoping that like the grow assumption group would kind of be that, there's a couple of counseling at work, but we're open to if somebody.
But what about like actual like architects and like construct, you know, you know what I mean, like people with.
You know, they'll have to have regular plans by an architect or whatever, you know.
Yeah, because if you're, if nobody on the architectural committee has knowledge on these things, how can you approve?
Well, okay, yeah, you know, what we, what the architectural committee does in Dietrich is actually just a couple people, like the city clerk who is, you know, and they just kind of look over the plans and make sure that the covenants are agreed to, the things like that, they're not looking to see if the weight-bearing walls are, you know, sturdy enough or anything like that, you're going to, the owners are going to have to depend on their architects for, you know, so you're going to get building their thing.
I thought that's why we had a building inspector to check the building for the mail.
Right, that's something, that's something completely different.
They're supposed to check the footage before the project, or and then the furniture.
Yeah. Okay, just because it's so that all structures are to be constructed in compliance with the architectural committee, so I thought that meant.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it sounds a little more than what it is, it's more just making sure.
He wants to raise, we need to raise the party.
You know, is it 1300 square feet or isn't?
Probably something like should go through the architectural committee, not be in compliance, because unless you have somebody on there that knows what they're looking at, talking about, you don't know.
And it could be worded completely differently than this, this is the kind of way I invented it.
And then, what was the minimum fair market value, Aaron, that was, was it?
Well, the last time we talked about it was three, three hundred and seventy-seven or three seventy-six.
Now, what, what's that?
The.
The fair market value to make the revenue to fund?
To generate the, what the house would have to cost.
It was two seventy-seven, two hundred and seventy-seven. It was two seventy-seven, two hundred and seventy-seven.
Until the, until the price.
It was two seventy-seven on the initial, and then when the costs all doubled on the second one, that actual cost of the house had to go up as well.
Yeah, so minimum of a three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar fair market value.
That's actually, that's what it was, because I still have the.
I'm not sure where you're getting that number, but that's.
That was the number your committee gave us when we had the housing meeting, because we went through and said exactly what would the house have to cost in order to be feasible to break even for the city.
Ours was based, Gary, on two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. I've got the spreadsheet right here.
That was the first, that was the.
No, it was not the first one. This is the last one we did, where we upped the amount that the tip would be paying out, and that we pushed back the number of houses that would be built for first couple of years, so it is extremely conservative.
We just approved a building permit for Keaton, and it's a, what, one hundred and seventy-five thousand? What was his request? I don't remember on the, I think it was a hundred and seventy thousand. But I mean, when you build a fourteen hundred or a thirteen hundred square foot house on ground level, I mean, it would be interesting to see, I mean, kind of get a cost on that.
Well, it's not so much what, possibly, it's what, it's what the appraised value would have to be in order for the tax.
No, I get that.
And I'd be glad to go over this with anybody. I've got the spreadsheet.
I've seen it, yeah.
So, yeah, it's.
Well, if we could get like a actual agreed upon number for that, that would be great.
I mean, you really don't know. There's nothing until something's built. There's nothing until something's built that gives a price. I mean.
But you can estimate what taxes are going to generate off of the dollar amount. It's an estimation. All the paperwork is a simulation.
Yeah, that's always.
So, yeah.
Yeah. I think you could just go with it, two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I remember hearing the higher amount that Gary did, and I think it's on the papers. I have to.
It's been quite a few months ago.
Yeah.
Alright. So if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and we'll have those covers written up into a, I guess it'd be an ordinance instead of a resolution?
Well, the covenants would actually be a private document that gets recorded with the subdivision's act, and then combines everybody in the subdivision, but it's not a citywide ordinance.
This is everybody's, we'll try to have that also ready for you by finance, please. Hey, there's, you need anything else, Gary? Okay. Up next, we have a motion to approve a computer from C T I for one thousand six hundred and three dollars and four cents for the school resource officer. This will be placed at the school forum. So we just need a motion to approve that, please.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second? I'll start. Alright, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Forkman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Green. Yes.
Alrighty, up next, a motion to approve a generator maintenance program. I will say that the generator at the water plant held up pretty nicely. It was out for a couple hours, but we were able to get through and with the help of Atkins Electric, I believe. And, but anyway, Jen, do you want to say anything on the maintenance program, please?
I met with Matt Atchison through Atchison Electric. We've got five generators now. We have six once we build the, build the water plant. I feel like we need a maintenance schedule for them. Originally, Matt was putting together what he thinks would be a good maintenance schedule, pricing, but recently he's called me and said that he is no longer, he will only work on Generac generators. So we have three Cummins generators and two Generac generators, so he's only interested in working on the two Generac generators. So I'd like to table this.
Table it, alright.
Till we get something hired out.
That sounds perfect. Alright, up next, we have sanitary sewer phase two students versus for Petersburg plumbing for the amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and eight cents. Motion to approve that, please. You have a second?
I'll start.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Forkman.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes. Alrighty, up next, a motion to approve the Chastain's invoices. So we have invoice number forty-four, sewer separation phase two, twenty-six thousand, twenty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Invoice number fifty-four, water improvements, phase one, EPA loan for fifty-four dollars. Invoice number seven six four four point oh one, water system improvements, phase two, for seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seven cents. Invoice number seven six four four point oh two, water system improvements, phase two, for six hundred and seventy-five dollars, forty-three cents. Invoice number seven six four four dash three seven, water improvements for water plant addition, one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-five cents. And then invoice number eight four nine three dash oh five, advisory services for a hundred and forty-four dollars for a grand total amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Any motion to approve those, please?
I'll make the motion.
Alright, thank you, Gary. You guys want one second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Walden.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Forkman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Alrighty, next, we'll have discussion and action as necessary on sewer, sanitary sewer system phase two projects is properly brought to the board. You have a second?
Well, the sanitary sewer project, they're over half done. I then took the lift station. They were waiting on materials. I'm really not sure if they have the materials yet. The last word I got from them was that they expected to resume the work mid-August, so next couple of weeks, hopefully. That's probably, I gotta get that project.
Alrighty, up next, discussion and action as necessary on water system improvements, project items is currently brought to the board.
So this is, I think this is the project where the nitrate was added and to the water treatment plant. There was some recent correspondence with the EPA regarding closing out the paperwork on that. That's all I had.
That's perfect. Discussion and action as necessary on water system improvements, phase two, the new water plant building.
So this is some plans we're working, still finishing up electrical and controls and some building mechanical, like HVAC system stuff, to get it ready for bid later this year.
We're ready for that. Alrighty, public comments on agenda items.
I have two.
Okay, I'll let you have two.
One, I just wanted to recognize the Sonic Building. We're very fortunate to have it in our community. With the, when we had the power outage, this was a cooling, cooling center, and I was one that utilized it during that time, and I appreciate looking in the community that allows you to have that cooling center.
And Sean is one of the members for here, so we want to thank him for.
Yes.
That was most definitely intent when we decided to, you know, we volunteered on our building as the emergency center, so that was our first real test, and luckily everything held through and it worked out, and we definitely had had things open. So I mean, if anybody needs services, cooling center, heating center, just reach out and we'll get things open for everybody.
A lot of people, I mean, I mean, a little bit more charge.
You were, you were, it was forty, it was a long forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
Yeah. I also, I also want to thank the lodge, too. You know, we started coming over here when COVID hit, you know, we had, we were required, mandated through the separation. Everybody had to be separated, so we were thankful that we, you know, they allowed us to come over here and do that. And then we just continued because it did work, you know. Everybody knows how City Hall is currently, we're in cramped quarters. I mean, I don't think we can fit all of these in there now, so we definitely want to say thank you to that. We pay them a hundred dollars a month to do that, so.
So you guys are kind of treating it like a rental. It works out.
It does, it does, so.
So it's, we've got the space at work, so we, we, part of ours is to support the community, so we, we do what we can do.
My other, like, second thing was health and safety. I was just concerned, I didn't know, I, I'm sure the school districts I know do like health and safety tests, pre-Christmas tests and stuff. I think G S I has done them as well, I think with the fire department and the ambulance and stuff. I don't know if that's something in our community, because we had that incident this summer, that, there was an incident this summer where, like, a missing person.
I know what you're talking about.
I just, I just didn't know if there wasn't, if there needs to be a better plan in place, or if there is a plan in place, or, I mean, we haven't really dealt with stuff like that, and.
So the city has an emergency plan, like if there's a disaster, tornado, earthquake, we have that, but, no, really.
Have you ever practiced that with anyone in the community, other than the fire department, the ambulance unit themselves, you know, I mean, has.
I, I have not, but I mean, Ryan would be able to make a better answer of that, but I have, and I've never known, I mean, lived here ten years, I've never known that.
No.
Community do anything like that.
To my knowledge, never.
Yeah.
So.
We need to have an established plan for a missing person or child, because if there was no, it was chaos. People were checking the same areas fifteen nights, because there wasn't a recording area, there wasn't, a command center, that's the word I'm using for it. It was totally disorganized and wasted time, so I think that's where Kim's going.
Right, and our community, I mean, when people found out, people was very involved. I mean.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We are a community that sticks together. It's very obvious. We have a lot of successful things going that was that a success that night?
No.
It was definitely an area that needed to be worked on, is what I'm, and.
I think so, then we could work with the sheriff on. I mean, I know that Sean Baker was, no, chief, deputy chief Baker was over here at the time, so I think something we could work in cooperation with the sheriff's office, the fire department, ambulance.
Yeah. Ryan, you want to say anything? Is this possible?
Well, so, a couple of things. Are we asking if we can do a training on that?
I, I think so. I mean.
I, I guess you could. The problem is with that incident, you have a lot of not first responders getting involved. That's where there's a problem. We probably should have put it out to the public versus having first responders look and then having people look on their own. I know that the experience we have, like the Taylorville tornado, I mean, that was unexpected, so.
Right.
We, that was a huge event, a learning event for us.
Right.
This was a learning event. We take, you know, the experiences each, each event, we kind of roundtable and see where did we mess up? What was lack, what was lacking? I know the sheriff's office now has an app that you can get, and they're really pushing this for the sheriff's office.
I've got it.
And all agencies can add things on there, so let's say, let's say tonight we have a kid missing. We can get, we can put a, put a call into them. They can put it on the app that goes out to everyone that has the app. You can have the alerts. They're really pushing that right now, so that's a huge tool that we have for the county, and all the agencies are on board. When we have the assumption test, we're going to put it out, and then everybody can see, anybody can get it anywhere. So they'll see notifications, they'll see if there's, you know, somebody missing from Kimber, things like that. Hey, be aware, you know, heavy police in this area because of a major crash, reroute fifty-one. And that's been a lot of the experiences that we've had, you know, twenty-nine, we've had a lot of crashes on twenty-nine in certain, in Persian County, so I definitely see where you're getting.
I'm not trying to say, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to put anyone down. I don't want that to come off, being misconstrued. I just want, you know, as a citizen, that's something I saw and something that maybe I need to be more involved in myself as well. Like, so we're prepared next time, or something, I don't know.
Something that people forget, too, our new city website, I haven't mentioned it for a few months, but the new city website has a feature of notification that's open to everybody in town. All they have to do is go on the city website and sign up, and it will, the city can send out emails and text alerts for anything. I mean, basically Janet has control over the notification system. And we can, when we first put the website in, we pushed it and I kind of backed off the last few months because we hadn't had anybody signing up for it, but it, our new website has a notification feature. That was one of the things that we asked to have built into it. And I always, I try to always remind people, go to our website and sign up for it, because like an instance like that, we can send out a city message through the website to everybody and say, you know, be on the lookout, or, or like Brian said, there's a bad crash, there's, you know, power's out.
Anybody else? We are going to go into executive session, two to five I L C S one twenty dash two, personnel.
Oh, I know. Oh, I know. I totally, I totally understand your position, my perspective, you know. No, I'm not worried about it. I, I've worked with you long enough. No, no, that, because we also have a period.